Good evening, everyone. And sorry, I'm a couple of minutes late.
I'll take it out of your page.
It is 6:03 and we are opening this meeting to look at some resumes for a sustainability part-time employee that we're looking at.
Contracted.
Yes. So with that in mind, we will get started with...
Yeah, I thought before we'd bring the candidates in, Mark, if we could just briefly talk about the sequence of how the board should interact with questions, the amount of time dedicated to it and so forth.
Absolutely. Yeah, we... The first candidate is Dana Clausen. And we'll have about a half an hour for each candidate to interview them. And this is a new position for our town. And so we want to make sure that we ask a lot of questions. This person will be working with a lot of other department heads and folks in town. And we want to make sure about their communication skills and all the rest. So lots to talk about.
Based on the timing, and the three of us, can I recommend that we each start with two questions? And then if time allows, based on the answers, maybe we go to a third?
Sure.
I think that would be limiting. What do you think, Dana?
Absolutely. That work for you?
Yep. Do you want me to read the position or...
Yes, please do.
Yeah. So this is the posted position which brought to us the three candidates that we have tonight. The Town of Holliston is seeking qualified consultants to serve as a sustainability coordinator. This is a contracted position that would receive policy direction from the Select Board and daily administrative oversight from the Town Administrator. The preferred consultant would have previous experience in assisting communities and others in the development of sustainability plans, the creation of sustainability tools, identify community risks and opportunities, have a very strong grant... Have very strong grant-writing abilities, and a demonstrated track record showing community engagement and community building around sustainability efforts. The selected consultant will have a combination of skills, experiences, knowledge, education, and a demonstrated successful track record of introducing and building community sustainability programs. This is a six-month engagement, roughly January of this year through June 30th of 2020. And it is funded by an allocation of $25,000 through the Commonwealth of Massachusetts. Thank you.
Great. Thank you. And just so that the residents are aware, our thinking is that this person having good grant-writing schedules... Skills would be able to continue to fund this position through grants. So I know that some people had a concern about adding more to the payroll, but that's the direction that the board wants to go in. So with that, we will take our first candidate. Good evening. Dana, how are you? If you want to sit here and introduce yourself to the folks back home.
Sure.
Tell them you can tell us a little bit about yourself, and we'll have some questions for you.
Sure. Sounds good. So my name's Dana Clausen. I've got an MPA in Sustainable Community Development and Nonprofit Administration. I currently work as a HERS raider, so basically making sure that code... Stretch code towns, builders in stretch code towns, are meeting the energy code. So testing and verifying their houses and helping them to reduce the energy use of their homes. Prior to that, I was a teacher. I taught high school and GED and also vocational classes. In about 2007, I did a training class for young adults to learn how to insulate homes and do that kind of stuff. And that was my first real introduction into the energy efficiency world.
Excellent. Thank you. Tina?
Can you just talk a little bit about more about both the Energy Advisor role with Home Energy Raiders and then the Home Works Energy with Home Energy Specialists? So that's your most recent professional experience.
Yeah.
Does that bring you in contact with municipalities and the building department and so on? Do you find... Who do you interact with, other than homeowner, in terms of performing those duties?
With the current position, I mostly interact with the builders.
Okay.
And then they're the ones that receive the documentation. And my interactions with the building department occur occasionally when there's some kind of an issue or a question.
Okay.
Not every state... I'm sorry, not every department is always familiar with the paperwork. If they've just become a stretch code town or something like... Or somebody new in the office, they might have questions about some of that.
Can you just explain quickly, "stretch code"? I don't know that term.
Oh, sorry. So in Massachusetts, there's two forms of building code. One is base code, and then the other is stretch. If you're a Greens community... Green community grant, I believe, you are required to be a stretch code town, meaning that you're... Have adopted a stricter energy code where a house has to use 55% of the energy or less of a house that was built in 2014 to that base code. So it's all done through a computer model.
Okay.
You basically see the house and do that.
Okay. And then I'll defer my second question to Mark or John.
Sure. Okay. John?
Good evening, Dana. Nice to meet you. My name's John Cronin. My first question relates to fundraising/grant writing. As you probably know from the posting, Holliston desires a sustainability coordinator that will have a specialized skill in writing grants and obtaining resources, financial and otherwise, to offset the cost of the position and decrease our costs overall. Can you give us an example this evening on the types of grants that you have written? Specifically, what parts did you contribute to? What type of grants were they? And how successful were you?
So most of my grant writing was when I was doing workforce development in New York. The biggest grant I was taking part of was a Department of Labor grant that would end up being a quarter million dollars for, I believe, two years. And that was for both my program and a nursing program. Basically, I was responsible for writing every section related to my program, the outcomes that we were going for, et cetera.
Was it a formula grant or was it a competitive grant?
It was more of a competitive grant, where the Department of Labor basically sent out all these. And if you had a shovel let ready program, that's what they were looking for as part of the Stimulus Act. I mean, there was... It was formulaic in that, you know, this section had to be this section. And Department of Labor grants tend to be kind of lengthy. I believe that grant was north of 100, 150 pages. And then I had some smaller roles in foundation grants. Besides that, when I was working for a small nonprofit called Rosia's Ray of Hope, we did do a lot of fundraising. Not as much grant raising because... Grant writing because it was international. And there just really isn't a lot of foundations or anything like that that support overseas schools.
Thank you, Mr. Ronian.
One of the things you list here is Home Energy Raiders provides technical assistance. And one of the things that we're very interested in, and we're interviewing for facilities manager tomorrow evening, is that we have a lot of buildings in our town that we need to make sure that we're bringing things up to snuff and doing the best we can to make sure these facilities are in a position that are on a schedule, that we're taking care of them better. And so you would be working quite a bit with the facilities manager position. And so I'm wondering, this Home Energy Raiders technical assistance, is that something that you did with that situation here? Were you working with others in trying to make buildings more efficient and so forth?
Exactly. I go and I meet with builders on a daily basis. And I assess the house when it's framed, when it's insulated. And then at the end, I test the ductwork for leakage and the house for leakage. And the point in going the first two times is to make sure that they don't have any issues with their framing, and then that they don't have any issues with their insulation. It's very easy to overlook something... For an insulator to overlook something, miss something, and for the house not to make... Meet its leakage numbers.
One of the things... The reason why I ask this is because we have an issue here at Town Hall when the construction of remodeling was done several years ago. The insulation wasn't done properly on the back door. And because of that, we had some freezing of pipes and all kinds of issues. And we have water coming down on people as they're coming in the door. And we understand that that is related to the insulation issues. And before we can repair it, the ductwork, the gutter, the downspouts, we've got to get the insulation taken care of. And that's what Mr. Ritter's been working on. That's going to happen soon. And so it's very important that we have the kind of experience that's going to be able to look at every building with this facilities manager position and come up with a game plan to get our buildings, not only in some cases in compliance, but also so that we're not having to spend money on these things that either weren't done properly or they need to be done over and brought up to code. So I noticed you had a lot of experience with education in individuals. And I just want to make sure that you realize this is a position that is going to be looking at all of our town's resources and not only just the amount of carbon that we're using, but really working together with a lot of other department heads and helping the town out in a lot of ways. So you feel as though that this experience mirrors that sort of thing?
Yeah. I mean, this is more on a residential level than commercial, but I think that there's a lot of similarities and crossovers between the two.
Okay. I appreciate that. Tina?
So part of the job description was, is Building Community Sustainability Program. So my question is kind of directed towards project management and your experience with that. So specifically, running meetings, preparing reports and timelines, presentations and technical writing in terms of the grant applications. Can you speak to those four areas? I'll say them again. Just your experience with running meetings, preparing, sorry, reports and timelines, because there'll be a lot of coordination among departments here in Town Hall. Your experience with presentations, because there will certainly be community outreach and engagement. And then your experience with technical writing because of the grant and funding component of the position.
Sure. Can I just ask, could I... Could the first two?
Of course. Yep. And I can prompt you again. Running meetings, preparing reports and timelines.
Sure. My experience with running meetings is I've run meetings in both work and also volunteer places. I was a member of a community group that was trying to start a food co-op for a number of years, which would get meetings of maybe 12 to 14 people on average. And I would facilitate and set the agendas for those meetings. When I taught, I did a lot of presentations, like, you know, daily. So I think I do have a really good grasp on putting... Getting information across clearly. And I try to make it clear to people that if they don't understand what I'm saying, that to stop me at any point in time.
How about technical writing and then sort of preparing reports and keeping projects on timelines?
Again, the grant writing with my time in nonprofits was most of my technical writing.
Okay.
And then preparing reports. As a teacher, you've got to prepare certain things in nonprofits. Everybody always wants to know for you to justify what your efforts to outcomes are. So you've oftentimes got to put together presentations to explain that to either funders or other parties that are interested.
Given the community outreach piece, there would be probably... Probably reasonable to say there are going to be evening hour expectations. I'm not sure what your commute to Holliston is like. Do you envision yourself having trouble with evenings? And we are, I would say, as a town, we are a strong volunteer-based town. We run a lot of our initiatives and efforts and so on with volunteers. So evenings become a very important part in any position here in town. So what do, I guess, what do evenings look like for you? Is that a commitment you would have a problem making?
That wouldn't be an issue.
Okay.
A couple of quick items and then my longer question. Are you currently employed at Energy Advisor?
I am.
Okay. Can you offer what happened in your career between the time when you apparently left as Program Director at Rosia's Ray of Hope Foundation in 2014 and when you began working as a Home Energy Specialist at Home Works Energy in 2016? It's a two-year gap there.
It's closer to one in some months. I left Rosia's in early December, and then I was hired at Home Works in like April of the next year. But yeah, my second daughter was born, and my wife was traveling for work a lot, which is a job that she no longer has. And it's no longer a consideration that I have to make.
Family obligation.
Yeah.
Got it. On to my question. So I see you have a fair amount of experience on the residential side, as you indicated, Mr. Ronian, regarding home energy, monitoring insulation and so forth. This question is a little bit beyond insulation, but it is energy. What do you see as the coordinator's essential activities for reducing energy and greenhouse gas emissions in a community? How can this position achieve that goal?
I think the first thing I would want to do is look around and see what other communities were doing. Because there's a lot of low-hanging fruit out there that could even possibly save people money. Like, New York and LA are doing a project where they're painting all of their roofs white, which sounds pretty dead simple, but they're seeing a 15% reduction in their cooling costs during the summer. So that's... I'm not sure what the ROI on that is, but I mean, it's white, thick paint. It can't be that expensive. So I think identifying programs like that at first, where there would be a savings upfront, you know, that would justify the cost, would be my first obligation or my first...
So your experience brings you to tell us that your first instinct is look at best practices in other communities. You're going to source examples of where Holliston can reduce its energy consumption. And you just gave us one example. Anything else come to mind, Dana?
Not at the moment, but I haven't really spent a lot of time looking for that in recent... In the recent time.
Okay.
But I know there are some.
You mentioned about IECC energy codes. Could you tell the residents back home?
Sure.
What that involves? Because, you know, a lot of times we're using...
Juggernaut.
Yeah. And people are not in understanding of that, so...
So the IECC is basically the body that adapts building codes every three years based upon a vote. And that code, the energy code section of that, is what pretty closely translates into the Massachusetts stretch code, which is the building code that green communities need to follow.
Okay. And so in order to be compliant with that, you would have to have some criteria that, for instance, this building would have to meet that code.
This building would not meet that code. No offense, but any building prior than to 2000s probably would not meet that code. The basis for a residence to meet that code is, again, they've got to use 55% or less of the energy of a house built to 2014 base code. And they've got to have less than three air changes an hour, meaning all the air in the house changes with outside air three times or less per hour.
Wow. That's incredible. And can you explain some of the reasoning for that? Why it needs to have the air changed so much? What is the main reason?
Heat loss.
Just the heat loss.
When you... The more... Yes. And then I know if you know anybody within the building community, they're going to say, "Well, houses are too tight today." And as a HERS raider, they blame me. But... Which is true. When we get done testing a house, the last thing we have to do usually is make sure that they either have some kind of mechanical ventilation to bring in air, or what's most common and still allowed under code is for us to set a bath van or two, to specific CFMs to make sure it's bringing enough fresh air so that you don't get issues with mold, so that you don't get stagnant air. And I always encourage people, if your bath van is running when you buy a new house, leave it alone. There's a reason for that. It's not to annoy you. It's because there are safety and health issues associated with not having that run.
Interesting. Very good. Tina?
I'm sticking to our two questions.
You have another question?
You have a third?
I think we've got a little time.
I'm just curious to know what you could... When you applied for this position, when you read the job description, you obviously would have researched a little bit about sustainability coordinators. I'm sure you're aware of the surrounding towns that have sustainability coordinators. I'm wondering what you feel like you would bring to Holliston. This is a consultant's role. I'm wondering what you would see at the... And also, the term was very clear that it's due until June 30th. So I'm wondering personally what you would set as goals for that six-month contract? What you'd like to see at the end of the six months in place for Holliston and so on?
Well, I think I would need to take a week or two to get my head around what state funding is available for what programs, because it seems as though that is a primary goal. And try to meld that with having a good plan to help put your buildings in a good spot, help put your climate plan in a good spot. You know, if I could figure out all the low-hanging fruit within six months and at least have a plan. I mean, I know some of this stuff is not going to go into action. You know, I don't know if you guys are looking... I see all your vulnerability assessment. I don't know if you're looking to put in a plan to do that. But I did participate in Somerville's climate plan, and I know that took about a year. So this stuff does take a timeline.
Lot of data.
When was that Somerville experience that you had? I know I saw it in here somewhere. Can you just refresh my memory when it was that you were working with Somerville on their climate act?
And it was as a volunteer, community member. That was 2016 to 2017. Like I said, there was four meetings over a year. I was on the volunteer board for the... On buildings. And so, you know, there's, yeah, like I said, four or five meetings per year for the year. Then I went to those and then solicited ideas, did a little bit of research. And then I also just recently did the Somerville Ambassador's Program, Climate Ambassador's Program, which was a six-month program to get people familiar with all aspects of the climate plan.
Sorry. I do have two more questions. It's obviously, again, a consultant position, and the salary's been... Or the compensation's been posted at $25,000. What would we expect in terms of the number of hours through till June 30th? Have you... So basically, the question is, what is your hourly rate? If you're prepared to share that.
Honestly, I had not thought that far through.
What do you anticipate as your commitment, then, for this contract?
Honestly, I thought it was a 35 to 40-hour week with more hours on certain weeks when there's meetings and stuff.
All right. And then...
I mean, I thought it was a job.
Yeah, no, just wanted to... It's always good to have that clarified. And then last question, I promise. In terms of environmental science education, you have your master's in public administration. You have a bachelor's in psychology and sociology. Do you have... What experiences, educational experiences, would you put under environmental science? Maybe it's continuing education conferences or through your master's or bachelor's degree programs.
I typically attend three or four conferences a year. You know, the MIT Sustainability Conference, the Communities one, and then usually there's one or two smaller ones that pop up.
Okay.
And then my... I do have the focus of sustainable community development.
You mentioned that at the beginning. So you have a master's in public administration with...
A concentration in sustainable community development and nonprofit administration.
Okay.
Dana, wrap up a question. This relates to collaboration. As Ms. Hine indicated, Holliston is rich with volunteers. We have a solid base of individuals who commit themselves to various tasks. The woman to your left has spent an enormous amount of time on this project. She would be a key collaborator. Can you tell us tonight specific examples of times when you collaborated with committees or residents around an issue? And give us an idea of that experience level. Are you a participant? Are you somebody that's running these meetings? Are you comfortable in these settings? Can you please explain?
Sure. I think my experience closest to what you're describing was my time with the Merrimack Valley Food Co-op, where I was one of the people helping to put that together. We had monthly meetings of about 14 people, which I would facilitate. And then from those meetings...
So you're the leader of that group?
Yes, I was.
Yep.
And within those meetings, I would try to identify who wanted to take on what task. I think when you're dealing with volunteers, you really need to have something for them to sink their teeth into, really have something for them to work on, to keep them engaged, make them feel that they're part of something. Nobody likes to kind of get vague directives and go off and flounder, so...
I'm good. Thank you, sir.
My last question. Can you tell us about your Afghanistan experience, particularly with foundation funds for the all-girl K through 12 school? Because we want to be doing the grant writing for this position to fund it, so that's kind of relevant to...
So that position was all... I did not go to Afghanistan. That was one of the rules my wife had. But yeah, so when I was there, basically, I was trying to find them kind of any technical support or supplies or anything that I could from stateside. And then there was really interesting things that you would not... That I would not have thought of, like, they didn't have a mail service, so everything had to be DHW... Is it DHW?
DHL.
DHL, yeah. To get stuff to the... To get stuff to the school, because there was no mailbox. We had sent over a bunch of backpacks, and they got picked up by security. And they wanted a... They wanted like a 50% tariff on it. And I... It took me about a week to figure out, is this just like bandidos at the airport? Because 50% sounds really high. But it was actually the legit import tax. So then we had to figure out, okay, well, next time, because this stuff's already in Holden, you know, I can't do much now, I got to go to the Secretary of something and get a letter from him verifying that what I'm sending in is legit and supposed to be there. There were a small... Couple of small foundations, like Lions Clubs, that wanted to put together science supplies with them. So I would work with those guys to kind of identify what we needed at the school. It could be very tricky, because people said, "Hey, you know what you need? Some microscopes." And it's really high-end stuff. And it's like, that stuff requires electricity, which we don't have on a constant basis. And really helping calm expectations of what they needed, because people wanted to send things that were just not appropriate for that area.
Right.
So...
That's good to know that you were able to, you know, help out from the ground level with minimal resources and still get things done. So that's a good thing to hear. Thank you. I guess that completes...
I'm good. Thank you, Dana. A pleasure to meet you.
Interview.
Thank you.
And thank you very much for coming out.
Thanks for having me.
And Mr. Ritter will be in touch.
Very best to you. Thank you, Mike.
So next up, we have Eric Giordano. If he's available, Jeff.
He is.
Yeah, if you don't mind having a seat and introduce yourself to the folks back home and tell us a little bit about you.
Sure.
Sort of your history. And then we'll ask you questions. Probably two questions each.
Okay. Sure. My name is Eric Giordano. And a little bit about my history. Well, I guess in terms of what would lead up to this program, really, it was about the beginning of the last decade that I really sort of had a shift and wanted to determine what sustainability meant to me, starting on a personal level. And I started working on farms, just because I thought the food system kind of represented something that I thought was really unsustainable at that time. So I just wanted to have that basic relationship with the... at that time. So I just wanted to have that basic relationship with the earth and learning how to grow my own food and meet my own needs in that way. And through that study and that, the progress in that, I found, I kind of came across this thing called permaculture design, which was sort of an integrated design framework for sustainability that included not just food, but energy, waste, and just the way that all these things kind of work together. And that sort of led me to take a permaculture design course in New York City. I lived in New York City for a little while and was involved in sustainability projects, a lot of them through my community gardens. I worked with three community gardens and some other organizations doing sustainability work. And finally decided to, kind of wanted to further, further myself in terms of that being a career path. So I went to and did a master's degree program at the Conway School of Landscape Design. It was an ecological landscape design and planning master's degree program in Northampton, Massachusetts.
Beautiful out there.
Yeah, it's beautiful. It's great. It's fun. And in that program, we did real projects for real clients, including a master plan that I did for Abington, Massachusetts with a partner, and another plan for a small town-owned property in Draket, Massachusetts.
Excellent.
Yeah.
All righty. Dana, if you would like to...
There are a couple little questions, followed by, I guess, my bigger one. So you have a, you have a bachelor's in music?
Yes.
I'm not going to say it correctly, but you have a bachelor's of science and music engineering?
Music engineering.
Is it fair to say that you were engaged in that profession 2006 through 2012? Your resume reads like there was a change in your direction professionally.
About 2011.
Okay.
So that's, yeah, that's when I refer to the beginning of this past decade.
Okay.
Yeah, I was, I was working in, I was in Los Angeles, working in that field.
And then the plan that you co-authored for Abington's master plan, was it adopted?
It is in the process. We actually, sorry, I have it here. We, we wrote three chapters of the master plan, so it's still in the process of being incorporated into the, the other parts of the plan.
And can you just briefly go over what the three chapters were? They were pretty specific.
Yeah, we did the land use, the natural and cultural resources, and watershed protection. So in the land use, we looked at zoning and sort of energy-efficient kind of layout and plan and things that would encourage more energy-efficient transportation options. We looked at conservation priorities, a lot of like the wetland regulations. In the watershed protection, we kind of identified key spots where green infrastructure and things like that would enhance water quality or benefit in terms of stormwater and things like that.
So I guess my bigger question then is, especially given what you've stated to be your involvement with community gardens and permaculture and so on, and then the work that you did writing Abington's master plan, if you bring that to Holliston, what does it look like here?
Well, the, it's kind of what I would say excites me about the position is that as a sustainability coordinator, you're kind of working at kind of different scales where you're, you know, working, kind of looking at, you know, working with the town departments, but also working in the community and working with, with different partners and kind of building coalitions in terms of looking at, I mean, I think the big, big things are energy and waste in terms of sustainability in a town like Holliston. So I think I would kind of, and a lot of what, you know, what we did in the, in the plan, or the process that we did in the plan was community, community outreach and analysis of the community and kind of understanding what their needs are and what their vulnerabilities are. So I think that that really would translate to the way I would kind of approach, starting with like learning what the needs are and then transitioning to how that would...
Okay. And just because I asked the other gentleman, I'll ask the next one as well. Your, what do you anticipate in terms of the number of hours that you would commit over this roughly six-month contract? And so the real question is, what's your hourly rate? And again, what can we expect from you in daytime, evenings? Any information there you want to share with us, just so we have it all laid out on the table?
I think I'd have to kind of review a little bit more about, because that was actually one of my questions for you guys, because understanding how that, how you envision that, if it was going to be, if you had a rate in mind, or if that was something that I would have to kind of specify or define. So I think, I think I'd have to give that some thought, determining what, you know, what would work for me.
Okay.
Currently, you know, I'm open to, you know, making it sort of a full-time job or something that I would do during the day, or, or a, you know, significant portion of my hours in the daytime.
Okay. Thank you.
Hi. Good evening. My name's John Cronin. Nice to meet you.
Nice to meet you, too.
So my question relates to sort of the core, one of the core functions of our quest for this position is built upon the need for it to be self-sustaining itself. We desire an individual who's successful obtaining savings from existing expenses and/or grants and other resources to offset the, the value of the position in a given year. So to that end, Eric, can you tell us, because we believe the position will rely on grants and other resources, what your experience is with writing grants? And can you give us some details of any grants you have written and what the results were?
So to be honest, I've, I've written one grant for our community garden. Actually, I was involved in the, in a process to, to write another grant, but I didn't actually do the writing, but we, I was part of the team that decided, you know, decided what our needs were and how to, how we would approach it. But I did write, basically on my own, a grant to get money to build a composting system and operation in my, in one of my community gardens.
Who, who was the grant applied to?
It was the New York Citizen Committee, Citizens Committee for New York City.
So this is when you were in New York?
This was when I was in New York.
So you were applying to a city grant program?
Yes.
Was it competitive?
It was pretty competitive. I had the, the, the benefit of the community garden I had been in had already received a grant from this organization, so they kind of had known our name. But we received, I think, just a thousand dollars to build this, this compost bin. And then we had to take that in and, take that and, within, within the compost committee of our garden, develop a system of receiving compost from the community and kind of have metrics with that and, you know, bring, give a report back to them about how much like weight, how much waste we were delivering.
To follow up on that, Eric, how, how would you characterize your writing skill and your ability to create documentation towards grants? Are you prolific? Do you engage that opportunity? Is it something that doesn't come easy to you? Could you describe that?
Yeah, that's, to me, a pretty enjoyable thing. That's, that was a major part of the, the program I was in. You know, we made like these documents and plans like this. There's a lot of writing involved. I have some writing samples that I could possibly, you know, send over to you. But that would be something I would enjoy doing. I would, I consider myself a good writer.
Thank you.
We have a, a recycling committee, and obviously you'd be working with those folks as well. Can you tell us a little bit about your master composter education and certification? Because one of the things we've been talking about is adding another component to our recycling, and that would be composting of food waste.
Sure.
And we just started a new contract with our trash hauler and recycling. And so we're interested in expanding that to get some of the, the volume out of the, out of the bucket, if you will, so that people have more room in that. Because we have, we adopted a 35-gallon trash receptacle bucket. And the DOT wants, DEP wants all the towns eventually to adopt that. And some of them have already, including us. But if we were able to get some of the volume out of the bags, like food waste, then I think the residents would be happier, because they'd have more room for the real trash.
Sure.
Can you explain how you might be able to put a program together for that? If that's something you think you could handle?
Yeah, I mean, that would be a key and something that I would be very excited to work on. In terms of how I would put together the program, I think it would take a lot of, a lot of, you know, first preliminary analysis and understanding on my part of the community, the community needs. It would be tough to tell them, tell you right now how I would put that together. But I do know, so one of the things I have been working on, I had hoped before tonight to be able to type it up, but I've been, I'm spending a lot of time just studying the state, especially with the opportunities and, and the grants and programs and initiatives offered by, by different departments and the Energy of Environmental Affairs. So, I mean, this is all, this is kind of my self-study and self-notes. Each one of these are different programs or grants and technical, technical assistance that the state is kind of offering.
There's a lot out there.
There's a lot, there's a lot out there. It's more than I even realized before I started kind of putting this all together. So that, this kind of thing would be a tool I would use in thinking, in thinking about how to put together that and what kind of assistance we could get from, from outside organizations and the state and federal and things like that.
And you mentioned you're working with others with the three chapters that you put together in the book there.
This, the master plan?
Yes.
Yeah, it was me and a partner, it was two of us.
And did you have other collaboratives? I guess my question is that in, in our town, you would need to collaborate with others to be able to accomplish things.
Yeah. And in this plan and the other plan in Draket, we worked, you know, with the Conservation Commission, the DPW, the Planning Board, you know, we interfaced with those other kind of town organizations. It's a big part, and then for each of those projects, we held multiple community meetings, where we had to, you know, get feedback from the community and then come up with some ideas based on their initial, what they initially told us, come back, give them, you know, tell them what we thought about that, what our analysis said that would be the best course of action, get more feedback, and then have that kind of iterative process of collaboration with town organizations, but also the community.
Great.
Experience with.
That's great. Mrs. Hine, do you have anything else?
Only question I would have that I didn't ask before was, there's, in somewhere in the material, you provided the references and resources. You developed an education program. Do I have that correct? You have some experience. I'm looking for, my question really is about presentations and your experience with presenting to an audience of any size, any size or type.
That was, I have experienced that, with that. I had, I had experience with that prior to my master's degree program, but never did I have more experience than in this program this past year. We presented, we presented updates of our plans to our classmates every single week. And then we, we had, you know, our community meetings where we had to start with a big presentation about what, what our goals were and presenting the agenda for the evening, getting their feedback. And then our final presentations were to a group of guest judges who were either planners or designers. And we, you know, had, then had to take that back to the town and present to their, the board, the planning board. So we had, you know, maybe 10 to 12 major presentations throughout the past last year.
Okay. Thank you.
Eric, one of the goals that we envisioned for this position is to have the coordinator help the town achieve reduced energy costs. This can come in a multiple, in multiple versions of, of savings, aggregate of services and things of that nature, reducing greenhouse gases and so forth. Can you tell us a little bit about your experience dealing with energy reduction programs and how you would help the town of Holliston achieve savings in that area?
Sure. I mean, to be honest, I would, I would say I don't have much direct experience with that, other than things I've studied and learned. But that would be, you know, something that I would have to engage with, but that would be something I don't have as much experience with.
You mentioned you've studied or you've, you've probed it on the, on an academic level. Can you give us some examples of what you've observed, what you, what you understand to be opportunities for energy savings and so forth?
Sure. I mean, I think there's, the two sides of the coins are, the two sides of the coin are energy efficiency. You know, there's like the, the Mass Save program. I mean, I can go through here. The mass, you know, yeah, there's, there's, yeah, the Mass Save, the Building Performance Institute, these kinds of things that will do like energy, energy audits, provide incentives and services and grants for, you know, insulation or renewable, lightbulb, like energy-efficient light bulbs. And then the other side of the coin would be, you know, renew, looking at renewable energy, that, you know, the green communities. I saw that Holliston is a green community. They, you know, provide assistance for both energy efficiency, energy efficiency and for renewable energy.
Thank you, Eric.
And I see you're from Northampton. Would it be, a lot of times we, in a town, we have meetings in the evening, because that's when volunteers can, can meet. And so would you be able to do that? It is a little bit of a drive for you.
Yeah, I think depending on what would be worked out, I would, I would relocate is my, was my goal or my, my thinking is how I would do this.
And so this is, because it's a new program for a town, it's also something that this person would need to grow into as well. So I would expect that it might take the first, you know, this, we have this grant for six months. I would expect that that would, would take six months for you just to, just to do the analysis and fact-finding and come up with some reports and things.
Sure.
And I guess the important thing is, is do you think you'd be able to do that in six months for a town? Because we would, we would need to have more grants to support this program to keep it going. And in order to have these grants written, we're going to need the data for backup. So this looks like a very data-driven situation, especially for the first several months. So would you be able to handle that? I think it'd be quite busy.
Sure.
But I think once you have all the, the data collected and, and start to make plans, then you'd be working off the plan. So, so I think it would be, you know, require some evening meetings and, and just getting to know all the players in this town would take some time.
I think, I think the, the program that I completed this past year was uniquely, uniquely prepared me for that kind of work. Was, there was a major element of the training was analysis and data collection, along with, you know, community engagement and stuff like that. So...
Very good. That's all I can ask.
I'm good. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you very much for coming in.
Yeah.
Thank you, Eric. I didn't introduce myself. I'm Tina.
Nice to meet you. Take care. Take care.
Eric, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Okay, great. If you, if you would tell us and the folks back home a little bit about yourselves, some of your history, how you got in.
He has five minutes, it looks like he just rushed in, you need a minute to catch your breath, or?
Should be okay, as long as I don't break out in a cold sweat. Walking out from out back.
You feel ready?
Sure.
Okay.
Thank you very much, Eric.
And then after the introduction, we'll have a couple of questions each.
Please, thank you very much. So again, thank you to the board for having me in this evening along with the other folks who are seeking the position here in the town. I really appreciate, appreciate the opportunity to meet with the board. Very excited that Holliston's moving in this direction. And I feel I'm uniquely qualified to help the town, especially in the next five and a half months, with a particular role that you're looking for at the moment. So, I grew up, I'm a native of Hopkinton, and believe I'm positioned for this, for helping the town due to the fact that it's a combination of my professional volunteer and related experience that I've accumulated over the last thirty years or so. So, that includes working for a state representative, understanding issues at the state level back from nineteen eighty-nine to ninety-two, and then getting into the professional field of the environment. My first paid job after helping to get the recycling program initiated in the town of Framingham with a wonderful group of volunteers and working with town officials was as the Executive Director of the Millis Recycling Consortium. Holliston was a key community in that effort. I was brought on board by the state through a grant program that the state, that the communities helped secure because there'd been a failed effort to build a recycling facility here in the town of Holliston on behalf of a group of twenty communities. So, it hadn't, this was an example of a unsuccessful community engagement process because again, there'd been a multi-year of planning process before the initiative was brought to the towns, folks in Holliston, and they were quite surprised to hear that something large-scale was gonna be built in the town. It's an important lesson, I was brought on board afterwards to help move the program forward and the lessons were learned because engaging the community in advance of good initiatives is really the key for a sustainable project, and it ties in with what this type of sustainability coordinator position is all about. Bringing common sense approach to government, working with the different stakeholders involved in making a town like Holliston so special. It's the volunteers, it's the appointed and elected officials, it's the professional staff, it's the business community, and of course, it's the school system. So, Holliston's been doing a great job over the last fifteen years. I tend to follow these things as a result, as a result of having, you know, lived in, close by in Hopkinton. I also spent a lot of years in the town of Framingham. As an elected member and volunteering a lot, I was fortunate enough to serve as the last elected member of the Board of Health in the town of Framingham. They changed the position to be an appointed position the same day I was elected. I also have, was lucky enough to serve when I moved back to the town of Hopkinton as a, on one term, on the Board of Selectmen. And was, and I'll round it out just by mentioning that, just like the sustainability initiative is really taking off here in Massachusetts, back when I was on the Board of Selectmen, the initiative at the time was the green communities, a situation, so. Because of my work in the environmental field and my volunteer experiences, I saw that the state was shifting resources to the green communities area. They were actually taking away funds from the recycling and solid waste area that I'd been spending a lot of work on, so saw that happening. We, one of the first things I did on the Board of Selectmen was set up a Sustainable Green Committee. We had twenty-five residents interested in helping out in the town. A key part of the initiative was not only doing things that when people think of good green things, they're thinking of environmental initiatives and sustainable practices. A key focus that I made sure our committee focused on was saving green, saving money. Good, sustainable initiatives save towns, save communities like Holliston money that can be used for more appropriate purposes instead of being wasted. So, I was very pleased that after my term on the Selectmen ended, the first round of communities were designated as, as green communities, and the governor came out to, in front of the police station in front of, in Hopkinton, to announce the first round of communities. So, that was, that was a pretty exciting time, we had solar panels on the police station at the time, and that was very exciting to see, so. I've been long-winded here, I'm sorry about that, but there's a lot to share, and again, it's been exciting to see what's taking place in Holliston because there's this initiative across the state, and we can talk more about some, a lot of the initiatives. One of the most recent ones, of course, is the Waste Minimization Program that the town entered. Obviously, I have a lot of background in that. With my work on trails over the last twenty years, it's been really exciting to see what, what's been happening with Mr. Widenick's leadership and many other folks and businesses here in Holliston on the rail trail, and the list goes on, so.
Great. Mrs. Hine?
Well, also just a housekeeping question. What would you envision your time commitment over the next six months for you to get the position? It's a contracted position, it ends on June thirtieth of twenty-twenty, so what would you envision as your time commitment over the next six months?
That would be probably worked out in negotiations, I believe, with Mr. Ritter. But I think if you look at all my past work that I've done, I'm gonna put the time in to get the job done. I really feel lucky that I live right next door in Hopkinton, so if there's a major storm on a weekend, potential flooding, I'm gonna, I'm the type of person that I jump in my car and I come down and check to see if there's flooding going on. So, I definitely have the time commitment. A bunch of my work in the last number of years has been up in the Merrimack Valley, so, especially with a freshman in high school. I've had a lot of encouragement to try to find some more work a little bit closer to home. This was, again, was a very exciting opportunity. I saw that initially, the effort was gonna be shared with Sherburne. Personally, I'm glad it flushed out the way it did here, with those being two separate positions for a lot of reasons, but I'm just, I was glad to see how that worked out and it fits in with my particular situation as well.
Okay, well, in terms of then getting the job done, at the end of the six-month contract, what goals would you like to see reached? I mean, you've obviously put a lot of thought, you have a tremendous amount of experience, you are sound and read, as if you're very well aware of where Holliston is positioned in terms of the sustainability coordinator position through the MVP program and so on. So, what goals would you set that you'd like to see reached by the end of the six months?
First, the key thing would be to meet more in depth with the Board of Selectmen as the policymakers here in the town to get a better sense of where, what exactly you want to happen in the next five and a half, five and a half months. I've been following the last number of meetings and have a pretty good sense of what you're after. Keith, the key couple of deliverables are gonna be really tracking down funding so that this can be a sustainable position in the town. That's a key thing, again, it's a, it's a new wave of sustainability positions being created in the Commonwealth. It's a challenge. It was the same type of challenge I went through when I was getting involved in the environmental field when recycling was just starting to take place in the Commonwealth. So, there was very limited funding for recycling coordinators. I tend to excel at finding grant opportunities, I've done this as a volunteer, I've done it professionally, I facilitated grant programs. One of the first ones I did was, I was, we had a volunteer group in Framingham, the Advocates for the Sudbury River, trying to bring back the river as a community resource. I read newspapers. I saw that there was a fifty thousand dollar EPA Technical Assistance Grant that was gonna be known, we had been applying for, and the deadline was a week later. We ended up applying for it, we got the fifty thousand dollar grant to help work on the revitalization of the Sudbury River for the Superfund site. We ended up getting a second technical assistance grant from the EPA. So, funding is gonna be key. Community engagement is the other key factor that's gotta be involved to help ensure that it's a sustainable position and the sustainability efforts here in Holliston are able to be maintained going forward. So, and that type of building awareness is involved with working with the stakeholders that, the three fifty, the good folks at Three Fifty have been doing, the different volunteer groups in town that have been doing good sustainability initiatives and onwards. And then obviously, just making sure, as I mentioned in the, is coming up with a plan that would be, help lay the groundwork for perhaps the next five years of that, what that position could entail and the type of projects, both short and long-term, that would make sense for the town.
Okay. I just have one more question then. Could you, at some point over the next few days, get a resume through to Jeff Ritter's office?
Should I edit that out?
Or at this moment right now? I'll just pass it on down to Jeff to circulate. At a later date, maybe? Thanks, Matt. Oh, there, oh, those two pages. Thank you. Great, thank you very much. Did you carry the nineteen ninety-six?
I was so lucky.
Did you really?
I was so lucky.
That's very cool.
Actually, yeah, for, yeah. Two particular things I would recommend, the Women's Independence Network, a shelter for victims of domestic violence, and bringing back the river. It was exciting.
That's Atlanta, right?
There's one extra.
Yes. Yeah, thanks.
Was it heavy?
So much more heavier after.
Yeah, after the first couple hundred feet. I'm all set, thank you.
Okay.
Thank you. Matt, pleasure to meet you, my name is John Cronin. First of all, thanks for coming in a few minutes early. Sorry to put you on the hot seat there right away, but, so, this position, you've already alluded to it, if you're following us, has a, has a point of emphasis to self-fund itself. We envision that the successful candidate will have demonstrated grant-writing skills or other skills to unearth available savings within a community offset the cost of the position. Can you give us some examples of either A, your grant-writing skills, what kind of grants have you written? How have they turned out? Or B, what type of initiatives have you taken in your career to offset the cost of position, i.e. through savings?
Two key focuses of what I've done professionally. So, on the grant side, I mentioned the type of technical assistance grant from the EPA of secure grants through foundations. The Crossroads Foundation was one, for example, to help secure funding for canoe launch and helping to create a nature trail along the Sudbury River.
Now, you say you helped, I just wanna clarify, I don't mean to cut you off.
Please.
Are you writing this or are you collaborating?
So, on the EPA Technical Assistance Grant, I found the, I found about, found out about the grant and then helped write it with our Advocates for the Sudbury River. The Crossroads Community Foundation Grant, I heard about it and I actually wrote the whole grant there on that one. I've written a lot of grant applications for my municipal work on the recycling and solid waste field. So, on an annual basis, I've applied for grants through the, to the DEP, to the Executive Office of Environmental Affairs. So, I've also facilitated grant programs for municipalities. I've also went on the Board of Selectmen, helped track down grants. As I mentioned, I helped, we helped through our Sustainable Green Committee, help identify grants that we secured by, you know, to help with retrofitting our facilities. So, I've also evaluated grants.
So, you've written these grants, that's great.
Yep.
Successful, on the other side, getting them?
Yes. That's what I'm saying, I, very few grants that I haven't been able to help secure. I try to try, I'm not the type of person that you just send out a lot of grant applications and you toss them out there and you hope you get a couple to land. You target ones that you really have a good chance for and you get them. That's what I like to do.
Thank you.
And the Keith part is, it's not me doing, it's not me getting the grant. It's by working with the stakeholders that are involved on the project and getting the letters of support and things like that. That's, that's a key part, whether it's the grassroots organizations that are gonna be backing these things, combined with state officials, you name it.
Thank you. That's my first question, so I yield. Do you want me to get into the next one already? All right, we're going off script there, going rogue. The other component that we're asking candidates about is experience with energy reduction, Matt. What do you see as the sustainability coordinators' essential activities for reducing energy use and greenhouse gas emissions?
This is a top priority.
Right, man, you just said the first goal was to meet with us, but anyways, go ahead. Okay.
We'll talk about the, you know, talk about the one B, I think, at that first, one A. We'll talk about one B with no one A. So, the, even just going back to nineteen ninety-six, it was, I think, a project I was working for, Environmental Futures in Boston Consulting Company, and I saw, actually, Metro West Daily News, Middlesex News at the time, I think. And the legal notices, I was trying to get some, look for work for the company. And the town of Framingham was seeking a consulting company to help do an outreach project for an electric bus project to help drive, move shoppers around the Golden Triangle, the shoppers' world and Natick Mall area. Sounded neat, so we ended up, I felt, you know, we wrote the applicant, we ended up getting selected to get the job. And so we did this big outreach event involving the Secretary of Environmental Affairs and somebody from the EPA came. And again, this is alternative energy way ahead of its time, and we learned that the buses didn't really work too well, and you also learned that in this area, folks don't, folks wanna get in their car and go from store to store, they just didn't wanna get in a bus. So, since then, I've been really focused on energy usage. I also studied in the Middle East, just even going back a little farther. I studied in the Middle East, graduate studies, and studied in Jerusalem, postgraduate studies. I course on, did an incredible course with a scholar, a leading scholar on petroleum, so I've just, I've tended to focus on these type of, this, this subject for a long, long time. I've got solar panels on my roof, I went through the Solarize Program when Hopkinton was in the Solarize Program, so I've read the meters every morning on the panels to see how we're doing. I've, the, those are some of the thoughts on it.
Appreciate it, thank you.
Matthew, you mentioned here under qualification as your DEP Regional Recycling Coordinator position. You had ninety-seven and ninety-eight.
Yes.
Can you tell us about the MRP Grant Program that benefited forty-five communities and how, how you went about that?
Thanks, yes, this was a grant program, a statewide grant program that was set up based on the, a grant program I had run three years beforehand for a group of twenty-three communities, it was a pilot program. So, we did that for the Nezwick Northeast Solid Waste Communities, the, and I served as their recycling coordinator. And then the state set up this municipal recycling incentive program. I was selected to coordinate the program for the forty-five towns, including, I was based in Framingham, but also Holliston was one of the communities I worked with, the town administrator at the time, Mr. LeBeau, can help secure, secure some funds for Holliston at the time. So, it was a program, actually, the person who took over for me has recently been helping the town with your program, Kathy Merza, just a wonderful person. And so we basically, I basically worked with the communities to meet eligibility requirements that the state set up so that we could get some money out to the towns and help boost recycling and programs and knock down trash and basically save money. That's a key part of what I do in my work, going back to an earlier question that John had mentioned. A lot of my work is not, when I've helped towns and cities, a lot of it's not, I'm not my fund, my position isn't funded by tax dollars, it's by savings through avoided trash disposal costs or coming up with grant funding for initiatives or other services. And that's a big part of what it is. Tax dollars, there are a lot of important things that tax dollars should go for, and it's nice if you can supplement a position like this with, through other means, it's really important.
Right, great. One of the things that we recently did was hire a new trash hauler and recycling program, and we've been talking about perhaps getting involved with a com- and we've been talking about perhaps getting involved with a composting of food waste to, to go in, go with the program. In an effort, because we, we went along with the DEP recommendation to use a 35-gallon trash receptacle container, and some residents have a hard time fitting all their trash into it, and so, if we had this composting program for food waste, that would also take the weight out of the container and help the town with costs that way, and, but also provide more space within the container. So, do you have experience with composting as well and-
Yes.
Setting something like that up?
I haven't had a direct experience with a curbside program like that. I have explored it. I've actually met several times with the good folks up at Black Earth Compost and other folks in the composting arena. One of my first, I'm the last of five kids, one of my first jobs as a kid was scraping the, if there was any food left on the plates, you scraped it onto one and I had to go down the back steps and there's a hole in the ground, you put the foot in the lid and into there, and then the pig farmer came around once a week or once, I forget, it wasn't once a week or every two weeks, so. We got away from, we've gotten away from a lot of-
Yeah.
Good, sustainable practices, and this one is coming back, thankfully. It's all a matter of how to do it in a way that's not going to hurt the tax, hurt the taxpayer-
I think that would be-
And do it in a good, sustainable way. And the Black Earth folks are an example, they're a good, small Massachusetts company with Massachusetts folks who are trying to do good things. And they're, I've already been thinking about potential ways to work with them here in Holliston and maybe have some businesses contribute some funds-
Yeah.
To help fund them do a pilot program.
I think that would really help.
And show that there's support for such a thing, because that's important.
Because I really do think that that would help make us more sustainable, but also save us some costs because of the, what is it, the tar, when you, when we get charged for-
Tipping.
Tipping, yes.
Yes.
So, you know, you'd be surprised, the weight of food waste in the container, and if we can cut back on that, that would save the town some money and it would help the residents be more sustainable. So, I think, you know, there's a lot of things we can do.
Mr. Chairman?
But because we started this new trash and recycling program, it would be nice to, to add this to the program and keep working at it.
Now, if I'm in a position to help, I would greatly enjoy that opportunity. And if it's Black Earth, again, it's a, they're very good folks, they have a good track record. They want to work with the community. They don't want to just, some companies like to just come in and tell you how to do things, and they want to work with you. They'll try to do it in a sustainable way, so.
Do you have a question?
Some folks here are already accessing Black Earth, so it's part, you know, we're beginning to individually use the services, but not as a community-wide program.
So, I think our goal on top of that would be to get up the number, usually, Black Earth will, they like, it's usually a couple hundred, partly depends on the size of the community, part of it depends on what other routes and other markets they're dealing with in the area in terms of what the, what the threshold will be, but it probably, we'd want to get that number up to a couple hundred, so it'll be even, even less costly for the folks who are currently participating and by getting a lot more residents, so.
That would be wonderful.
That would be the goal.
Great. Any other questions?
No questions.
You're outside?
I'm fine, thank you.
Okay, thank you so much for coming in, Matthew. We appreciate it.
Thank you very much.
And Mr. Ritter will be in touch with everybody-
Pleasure, yes.
... after we've had a chance to review this.
Do we need to close the meeting? All right, so make a motion to adjourn at 7:18. Oh, I'm sorry.
Did you-
I thought I was here.
Did you want to be somewhere?
I do, but that does not mean-
Did you want to deliberate a little bit about the three?
Yeah, no, of course, of course.
I think, you know.
Oh, no, we're on camera.
No, we're on camera.
Showtime, John. This is, this is the real thing.
Yeah, transparency is very important.
It's a thing, yeah.
So, have you had a chance to rate the three? Is your number one, two, and three?
Okay, there's a lot of information, but, so, John, you go for it. You're chomping at the bit there, so take the lead.
I'm ready to, I thought all three were distinctly different. That was the thing that I took away. I thought Mr. Clausen's experience with residential energy efficiency was interesting. Educational background, that never hurts. I didn't, wasn't overly sold on a lot of his experience in the grant area and the energy area. That's okay, you know, he's just, he's got a niche. The second individual's name was Eric Giadano. Fascinating background, seems to have a very strong background in innovative farming, if you will, or permaculture backgrounds. He has an emerging public experience working with Drake and Abington. Not a lot of experience, though. It's emerging. You can tell he's learning something. He's a very bright individual. Again, minimal grant experience. He wrote one, he was involved on a team in another. Very interesting guy. I have to say, I thought the last fellow we saw moments ago, Mr. Zedek, he seems to hit almost all my anchors. I was, I was going to ask him for his resume as well because it felt like something was missing, so I'm grateful you did that. So, we've got his education and his- No, no. I would, I would say that Mr. Zedek, in my perception, rises to the top of my, my choices just based on his experience in this world of environmental management. He's a local fellow who's got a lot of experience with grant writing. He understands the role. Residents at home should know that Mr. Zedek also, also prepared a work plan proposal for us. It's, and it's an interesting read, but he took the time to put together an idea of what he would do with this position. It's, you know, it's probably about 500,000 foot, wasn't very detailed, but it was compelling. He put some work into it, so I'm leaning in the direction of Mr. Zedek, the last candidate.
And Mrs. Hi.
So, I was struck by many of the same things. I was also struck by Eric and Dana's comments that they were viewing this position with the understanding and the clear, transparent understanding that it's a $25,000 contracted position over six months, and I was really pleased to hear them say they were looking for a close to full-time commitment to the, to the town. I did not hear that from, from Matt, but that doesn't mean to say that it wasn't what he was thinking, but that was very compelling to me. I think that they, the first two candidates showed a real desire to be committed to the position, understanding that it's a contracted six-month position. So, I liked that. I thought that the first candidate, Dana, was very much service-focused. I thought there are many examples over his professional career where he, my impression was that he places the priority on service to whatever community it is, whatever project it is that he's engaged in. I think that is something Holliston would benefit greatly from. I think the fact that he's going to conferences on an annual basis several a year shows a real dedication to understanding the issues and that commitment to service, I, again, was really struck by that. With Eric, I was really, I thought he was very academic, which I'd personally respond to, and also engaging, which I think goes a long way in terms of community engagement. So, I really liked that. I liked how he narrowed in right away with the top priorities being energy and waste reduction in the town. So, I thought that he had a very clear vision, and I really liked what he had to do with the Abington Master Plan, the chapters that he co-wrote. That obviously speaks a deep understanding of some key things, conservation, watershed issues, and land use zoning and energy consideration. So, I was, I was very impressed by that. And then, of course, with, with Matt, he, in my mind, had a very strong political background, which I think is essential when you're talking about the different departments in town and who you're going to have to collaborate with. I, I mean, his experience is tremendous, and he definitely understands the need for funding for the position that comes outside of the taxpayers' responsibility.
Yeah, I think he has.
And I think that makes his, yeah, I thought that was a very compelling argument that he made as well. No doubt about his experience being strong, especially with working under, working in a grant-funded position and also seeking out grants and funding sources. So, I feel we have three strong candidates. If I'm asked to rank, I will. I don't know if we want to do that tonight, but-
Yes, please do.
Okay, all right. So, I would put, based on, you know, the last 45 hour and 25 minutes here, I'm going to say that Eric would be my number one, Matt would be my number two, and Dana would be my number three.
Okay. So, all three-
I think I misheard. Could you just do that one more time?
Sure.
Yeah, sure. So, I would say-
Eric won.
Eric would be my first choice. He was our second interviewee. Matt would be my second choice. He was our third interviewee. Dana would be my third choice. He was our first interviewee.
Okay. So, I think all, all three candidates, I was looking for a lot of things. I think that they're, they're all pretty good communicators. I don't think, and even Eric, when he was asked a couple of tough questions, didn't really stumble. He went into his notes and he was prepared. So, I think they're, I think from a communication standpoint, which is important for this position, that the three of them are about equal, although I would say that Matthew is a little bit, a little bit better as a communicator. But they're all strong in communication. They all appeared to me to be very honest people. They, you know, when they said a couple of times they, they'd have to research something, they weren't sure, I'd much rather hear that. So, I, I think that all three are honest and would, and I think they would give, all three would, would give the best that they could. I saw that, that all three were organizational. They, you know, they were, they would be able to put together organizational charts, which is important, and probably do some graphs and things like that. I think Dana's experience, and that's, that's where I, where I can really separate them. I think Dana's experience is more for the homeowner, but I'm sure in time he could catch up with the, with the municipal, but I, he's very strong with the homeowner. I think Eric, it would be, it would be more of a learning curve for Eric. I think that, that he doesn't, he lacks the experience that the other two have, although I think he's very sharp and, so, you know, he's, as I say, he's, he's very good. But, but my number one choice that I wrote down was, was Matthew. And the reason why is it was really hard to cancel out, you know? Like I said, they're all honest, they're all good communicators, they've all got education, they're, they're all good at, I think, problem-solving. But Matthew has, and because we only have six months for this position, to me, Matthew has the better qualifications of grant-writing and to be able to sustain this position. If we had a longer period of time, I might have gone with Eric because I think that he would in time learn, but I, I was sold on the experience of grant-writing and the ability to not let this program die, that, you know, we've got a short time to do a lot of data-driven work, and we've got to, we'd better get going, writing some grants to support this if it's going to be a long-term position. So, in respect to the position and being able to maintain it on a full-time basis later, I put Eric, I put Matt as number one. And I put Dana and Eric are, I could go either way for number two or three with, with either one, but, but that's why I went with, with Matthew. So, I know it's a little different than what the two of you were spoken about, but that's where I'm coming from.
Okay.
Just some thoughts before, and if we take a vote, the, you're right to point out that this is, it's actually less than six months. The candidate will have less than five months to accomplish something. We've always said it's proof of concept, so we'll have to evaluate this come June, find out if we've picked the right candidate, and if not, I'm okay coming back and saying, you know what, let's spin the wheel again and see if we get the right kind of person to work in the town of Holliston for this role. And, and I feel very comfortable about that. I, it's 20 hours, excuse me, it's a, it's a position that's funded, you know, basically half-time.
Right.
So, it's something that the individual's going to have to hustle and achieve a lot in a relatively short period of time. So, Mr. Ritter will have to keep his eyes open and give us updates on how they're doing. And I'm sure our activist community locally will be giving us feedback on how well it's going as well.
Sure.
So.
They always do.
So, if you would like, I would be happy to make a motion if you're willing to entertain that, Mr. Chairman.
Yes, a motion.
So, I'll make a motion to appoint Mr. Matt Zedek to the Position of Sustainability Coordinator for Town of Holliston.
Okay, do we have a second?
Second, and if I could, I would add this comment. I would ask that Jeff Ritter reach out, you haven't shared your feelings on Eric, but I-
I did, I think I did.
My comment would be, if it's, if it's appropriate and possible, I would like to reach out to Eric and let him know that this is a position that will be reevaluated, as you mentioned, in, in June.
Sure.
I, I think that there's a lot of potential there and a lot of enthusiasm there, and I'm, I'm really drawn to that for this position, so-
I get that.
I second the motion with that comment.
Okay. All those in favor?
One other brief comment regarding that issue. I would like Mr. Ritter to check references. We should do that with all our hires, but I don't see any on Mr. Zedek's resume, so perhaps you can ask him for those, Jeff. So, it's a condition of the appointment, okay?
He did speak to having a relationship with Robert Widneck-
Yeah.
And with Kathy Merza.
And with the town of Framingham, too.
So, there, condition upon-
Absolutely.
-a successful reference check and background check, so.
Okay, you got that amendment, Jeff?
Got it.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries.
Motion to adjourn.
Do we have a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Thank you and good night, folks.